Should I be able to hear council chambers?
Room has been unmuted.
I will get logged in then. All right, is it one o'clock? It is exactly one o'clock. All right, calling the meeting to order. For February seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, council give me two secs. I think I feel like I should log into the Zoom meeting. Just so I can see councillor Jolly. All right, well, that's happening when I'll turn down my volume. Done. Okay, welcome everyone. All right, I need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Councillor Mackay, go ahead.
That the February seventh, two thousand and twenty-three agenda be adopted as presented.
All right, I will call for the vote on that one.
Yeah.
So voting is closed, and I'm sure that's unanimous. Yes, unanimously approved agenda off to a good start. Attendance at the start of the meeting is a hundred percent with, sorry, with council jolly virtual. And then the next thing on our agenda is, of course, presentations, delegations and announcements. And we have obviously a crowded gallery because we have a ceremonial signing with the Rohit group of companies. So welcome everyone. Nice to see everyone's faces here in chambers. We have, I'm going to say a few words, but first I would like to invite the founder, right? He up to the, it's the podium, Raffi Gupta. He's going to give us a few remarks about Rohit in general, I'm assuming, and some of his comments on this transaction. And then I'll say three words, then we're going to have a ceremonial signing, and then I would like to invite all of council down to get their picture taken as well. So normally it's five minutes at chambers, but speak as long as you.
Speak as long as you like to talk, so I wanted an hour. But I'll try to be within five minutes.
Go as long as you want.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councillors. City staff, Rowan staff. Above all. Really residents of the city of St Albert. I'll go a little bit about the history of the Sherrilllands. They are twenty-five, two hundred and fifty-five acres. But there are lots of lands surrounding this. And lots of discussions have taken place. For more than a decade to start the development in this particular area. About five years ago, we tied up this land. Then, when we bought it, it had the challenges, it had the landfill. It had a very deep hole. Which was dangerous, fifty problems were there. So, but I had lots of trust in my team to come and innovate today and work with the people of St Albert. One thing I believe. Madam Mayor, one and one can be two. One and one can be eleven. What I am saying to you is that with the support of the council, hence residents. We have made this eleven. And it is not a thing which I'm really making it or saying it. But in three years, to bring such a difficult site. It is developed. If you see the north side. We have one thirty-three acres, one thirty-three lots were developed last year. The south side is all created. We have taken care of the landfill. Everything is done, they're ready. Together we worked, and where we are today, impossible has happened. The lens or the project is named Sherrill. It is a historical name. My initial French settlers gave this name. Our team. Clearly worked on it, and we create, created the French architectural for the houses. It will be one of the best communities. You will have, we are very proud to have that. Now, what I'm going to say to you is, we are very, very pleased, me, my wife. My son, above all, my staff. That we are part of this donation of twenty-five acres land. To the city of St Albert. For me. I'm a new immigrant, of course, I came fifty years ago. But still. This is a big part of my life, when I'm retiring from my own business and handing over. So I take great pride for myself and my community. To be part of this donation. Madam Mayor, here is your land. You do whatever you like. I'm waiting for, with my grandson to come and swim, to come and exercise. Thank you very much.
Well, I will happily accept the virtual chunk of land. So council and obviously the city and who we represent, which is seventy thousand odd residents. Really want to express our appreciation for this. For you, the group of companies, for this donation of land. So there was a press release, I don't know if it's already gone out, but in it, it talks about. Ten hectares of land, that's the volume, and it's worth approximately five point six five million dollars. So that is a generous gift to our community. And of that, twenty-five percent of that green space you see on the screen. Will be open space and parks. And then, of course, the future amenity site we've talked about, and you've talked about. It'll be, it'll be enjoyed by not just residents of today, but by residents long into the future. So that is really, that's something that I'm excited about. We wanted to also just talk a little bit about. That there's going to be four thousand people living in there at some point in the near future. And that land has had various ownership since I've been elected, but when I heard that Rohit had purchased it. And this will be your first development in St Albert, which is exciting too. But the reputation of Rohit around the region preceded you, and we were very excited to welcome you into our development community. And I'm happy that you're here and we can work together on this beautiful Sherrill neighborhood. And so, you know, just honestly, thank you. And I think there's going to be a future generation that will also somehow have to thank you. And let's hope that we can catch your grandchildren swimming in that amenity site sometime in the very near future. It will be a challenge for us to get it done. We're doing a lot of public consultation to see what the community wants up there, whether it's pickleball courts. Obviously, the swimming pool is a priority, but there's, you know, there's bike skills, and there's a whole lot of competing ideas of recreation. Hopefully, we can accommodate as many as possible. So this is, this is great. I really appreciate everything you're doing for our community, and I would love to invite you down now. Because we're going to get some pictures taken, because we've got this very special table set up. And did you want, yes, I was going to say, please bring your wife, it's Krishna, down. And of course Rohit, who is the president of Rohit right now. So council, you can come down with me, we'll probably get some pictures of just the signatories. And then we'll all group in together for a bigger group picture. So why don't we all head down? Three o'clock, three o'clock, Sheena. What a great way to start a council meeting. That was fun. Yes, we should get donations of land. But that's the first time in my twelve years that we've had that big of a donation, right? Yeah. Mike. With rides left. Okay, councillor Jolly, can you hear us? Any business arising? Actually, I have one. In my briefing note, it said that as of yesterday. Cultivate the conversation would have a survey up on the community amenity site. And when I checked before coming down here, it wasn't there. So I'm just wondering, is that soon?
Yeah, the plan is still to kickstart it immediately. So if it wasn't up yesterday.
I don't know if it was in the press release that it was available. Yes, it says right in the press release, the community manager site will begin February eighth, cultivate the conversation. So it's not there. Just, just so you know, today's the night, though. Yeah, no, oh, why did, today's the seventh. Can you ignore me? I thought it was the ninth already.
Do we need a motion?
Okay. Consent agenda, so councillor Hughes has let me know that she's pulled off. The boring bylaw, just so you know, councillor Hughes, the boring bylaw is here about funding of the project. The project itself is not up for debate today.
No, I understand that.
Okay, all right. So if you want to make the motion for consent.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Going for a win. But the recommendations in the following agenda ports be approved, six point one, the regular council meeting minutes of January tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. And special council meeting minutes agenda twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-three to be adopted as presented. Seven point one appointments to the arts development advisory committee, ADAC, and the assessment review board, ARB, and the community services advisory committee. Now, before I finish reading that, Mayor Hearn, what are the names in here, and I missed it, or are you guys supposed to?
I will read them when we get to that part.
Okay, we don't need to worry about that. Seven point two, standing committee of the whole item business leaders forum. Seven point three, standing committee of the whole item proposed amendments to council policy, CCAO twenty-one, conducting a census. Seven point four, amend the time of the March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, sending to the whole meeting. And ten point one, costs associated with council membership on executive committee on Canadian urban transit association.
Perfect. I'll call for the vote. Voting's closed, and that passes unanimously. Six point one was the minutes from January tenth. And a special council committee of the whole on January twenty-seventh approved on consent. Seven point one was board appointments. This is what you were referring to, councillor Jolly. Let me blow it up so I can read it. So the motion that was proved on consent. Well, by the way, it was councillor Bromanski and councillor Killick that did these interviews. And we owe you a huge thank you, because when I saw that there was twenty people that you had to interview, I was like, well, somebody should jump in and help. But I couldn't that day. So anyway, I don't know how long it took you, but this council owes you a huge gratitude. So thank you for doing that work. All right, so the recommended motions were. That Amy Frances Cop be appointed to, as a member of the Arts Development Advisory Committee for a term ending December thirty-first, two thousand and three. That Carlos Miranda be appointed as a member of the city of St Albert's Assessment Review Board. For a term ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. And that Krista Wilson be appointed as a member of the Community Service Advisory Committee for a term ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. So we'll get letters out to those volunteers, appreciate them taking this role on. So seven point.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Could just add to that, that I would say it was just fabulous. We had twenty great applications for the position. I think the story in the Gazette about getting people engaged, residents engaged.
I think it helped, yeah.
Prompted a significant number of really interested residents to come forward. There were, I would just say, some absolutely fantastic resumes submitted and interviews. We have an awesome base of residents that want to get involved. And it was a very hard decision for councillor Bromanski and myself to select people for these committees. But it just shows you the commitment that we have from, from our residents. They, they are there and willing, ready and willing to volunteer, keyword volunteer for these positions. So I would like to acknowledge all, everyone that applied. And the three successful people. And I'd also like to acknowledge Renee from our admin team that, that helped us manage all of the additional scheduling. That came in at the last minute. Very, very helpful, done on Zoom, so it kind of flowed well. But again. Real strong commitment from our residents, and thank, thank you to everyone that applied.
Thank you, councillor. Well said. All right, seven point two is approved on consent, and the motion read that council approve. The St Albert Business Leaders Forum framework as presented, so we received that at committee of the whole last week. Looking forward to that. Seven point three was on consent. The motion was that the first sentence. Seven point three was on consent. Um, the motion was that the first sentence of section one of Council Policy, CCAO 21, Conducting a Census under service standards and expectations be deleted and the following substituted in its place. So unless otherwise prescribed by provincial regulation or resolution of council commencing in the year 2023, the city shall conduct municipal census at intervals of once every five years timed to occur at approximately the midpoint of the intervals between scheduled federal census. Uh, seven point four was also on consent. Um, we just moved the start time of our March um, Standing Committee of the Whole to 10:30 because hopefully we will all be at the business breakfast. That's what it was, business breakfast, right? I knew there was a conflict. So thank you for squeezing that into legislation, legislative legislative services. Um, eight point one was pulled off consent by Counselor Hughes. So I'll let you uh, open up with some questions.
Yeah, I just have a few questions. Um, Dan's around, right? No, she's not. Okay, we have somebody who can answer finance questions then. Okay. So when I look at this, so we have a borrowing limit at 10%, and right now our borrowing, if let's just say it doesn't change. Says right now, flat line is good news to write this point. What's our borrowing rate right now? Is it 6%?
I'll actually ask. I think we've got Anne and Brenda online. I'll turn it over to Anne as she can answer that, Counselor.
I think it's four something, isn't it?
Sorry, can you just repeat the question? Sorry, my apologies.
If we did, no problem. If we were to borrow today, what's our borrowing rate at? I know it's we have it capped at 10 in here, but what are we at today?
So we borrowed in December and it was at 4.87%.
And but it's gone up since December, right? So for this year, where are we now if it was at? If it sits, let's assume that today stayed flatline to December. So I know we do it the second part of the year.
Um, I just have to pull up the rates quickly, um, Counselor Hughes, just to see, because I I just hadn't done that. Um. Let me just do that for you. I would just have to pop and tell Alberta Treasury here. Did you have any other questions while I'm doing that?
So the other thing, what I'm looking for, and maybe you'll have this, Brenda, is with the current tax rate, again, assuming it stays flatline and not at 10% for today, unless you have the 10% number. And we, because part of this is going to be paid for from offsite levies, part of this is still tax dollars. What if it, how much of a tax increase are we expecting as a result of this borrowing by law? Assuming we went to the 17, or if you want to go to the full 21, since it's actually we're approving either one, just tell me which one you got and what we're looking at the tax increase at.
Um, that information I'd have to get for you, honestly. Um, we just projected out, um, you know, what the borrowing would be with this borrowing by law. We didn't actually, I don't have the numbers on specific tax information, which I can get for you.
Okay, sorry, Mr. Flora, when this comes back to council. Is there a public hearing?
No, there's just the petition time is.
Yeah, this this uh, because of the unique uh, St. Albert policy on these things, this won't come back till April.
Right, yeah, okay.
Okay, keep going, Counselor Hughes. So um, certainly for the second reading, I'd like to see what the what the projected tax increases would be with the full budget and at the 21, what it would be at the current rate of interest net at 10, just so that we have like the worst case and best case scenario. Yeah. So those are the two things I'd be looking for. The other thing that um, I'd like to see, and again, this is not for this reading, obviously. So Brenda, don't panic. It's okay.
I'm panicking.
Yeah, the heart rate should just go right back down again, okay, um, is we have um, potential additional borrowing boss. We have St. Albert Trail. We have potential the Community Men's D site happening in the next two years. Uh, we have the servicing of Lakeview, and I think that we it'd be good if we could get all of that information provided to us and see what are we actually looking at for potential borrowing, even though some levels we're still guessing a little bit of what it is, we should have a ballpark idea of um, what it is and and what the tax increases are, just so that uh, when we do this, we understand because I we're at $95 million right now in borrowing. And we could potentially be doubling it if we actually have everything we're to go ahead. And I just we're getting really high. So I just so we make a energy decision if we still want to fund this or not when it comes true. And I understand that we made a decision of budget, but decided to do something is different than that when you actually put your credit card down. So you want to buy the car until you actually get approved for the loan. So I just want to make sure that we have all of that information available. Um, so I can send that to you in an email specifically, all the items that I'm looking for, but um, it is what is our debt projected going to be in the next 12 months? And also next 24, because and my last question, which I'm hoping you might have, Brenda, is um, or may I'll look to anybody at this point. We have a projected tax increase that's been suggested at the last budget to be around 8%, 7 to 8%. Was that included to assume that this was passed when we did the projection of it, or is it going to be amended to be increased beyond that when this bylaw is passed?
Yeah, I'll defer to Anne to follow up on that.
And through um, through the mayor to Counselor Hughes, when the tax increase won't increase, like it was it would the assumption was on any draws or debentures to this point, and then any future draws on the debentures and futures would be impacted in those years. So there wouldn't, we wouldn't be looking at an increase for the 223 budget if that is what you're asking.
For 224, because we've been discussing next fall is coming. I know it's February, but it feels like it's coming like a freight train to me. So um, when we were discussing like potential tax increases for next year, we were given like that ballpark number. Did that ballpark number include the assumptions this bylaw would be passed?
It did. It did. Yeah, that was already included.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so I'll send you an email with those specific items. I'd just love to see in the second reading. Um, if you haven't earlier, that would be awesome as well. Uh, I just I just so that the the public is aware, whether they're in favor or against it, it might actually relieve some of their concerns if they actually understand what the tax increase is or isn't, and we don't um, stipulate what it is, especially since we have some of this covered from offsite levies, correct? So not all of them fall directly on the tax base. And I think that just having that understanding of exactly how much we're actually expecting taxpayers to pay might um, help alleviate any concerns. That's it.
Perfect. I'll just circle back to you. Um, I looked up the rates here. So the 20-year um, rate is sitting at 4.83% right now.
So it really hasn't changed then since December for us?
No, it hasn't. No, it's just very marginal, 4.7 to 4.83. It's it's pretty small. Yes.
That is good news for us. So, okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's good news, but if the province hadn't changed the way they lend money, because I I got a complaint from a town in Alberta. They need matching money to uh, honor a federal grant. If they had borrowed money uh, for a 10-year term in July of 2021, it would have been 1.6. Now it's 4.82 for them. And that's because the provincial government has changed the way they lend money. That's why I was bringing it up at strategic planning, but 1.6 would have been much more preferable. Yeah. Yeah, exactly. Counselor Bukai, you want to make the motion?
Absolutely. That bylaw four slash 2023 being a boring bylaw to rebuild Villeneuve Road be read a first time.
All right, anything to add to that?
No, thank you.
All right, I will call for the vote. Vote is closed. And that passes unanimously. That's all we have, right? Just the one motion. Yep. Okay. The next on our agenda is, ooh, on consent, Counselor Broadhead. Congratulations. The motion read that 7,500 from the Council Contingency Fund be used to cover travel and accommodations and other miscellaneous costs for Counselor Broadhead in 2023 in relation to his role as a member of the Executive Committee of Canadian Urban Transit Association. Wes, I know it's extra work on your part, but we appreciate you having um, not just St. Albert's voice, but Alberta's voice at that table, continuing to advocate for transit.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I appreciate the the support of council. I just to note that uh, all of the meetings apart from the National Advocacy Date is in Western Canada, so it's going to be significantly less than that number.
That's good. Uh, the next.
Take a bus then.
Yeah, exactly. As Counselor Hughes annual updates to the city funded per capita based programs, she emailed us all saying she was going to move um, the staff recommended alternate motion. So if that's still your intention, Counselor Hughes, I'll get you to read it in.
Just let me get to here.
Page 43 of.
Got it. So that all city funded per capita based programs are updated annually based on estimated population increase as determined by administration standards policies. Oh, sorry, standard procedures reflecting both historical growth rates and forecasted developments. Population used for the purpose of calculating grant budgets shall be adjusted any year where local or federal census numbers are published.
All right, before I accept that, I'll open it up to council to ask any questions of either Counselor Hughes or administration. Counselor Bukai, go ahead.
Um, I appreciate the alternative motion. I'm actually very much in support of this, but I do want to uh, I know administration put forward the suggested alternative motion, but I mean, um, question would be to like, how much staff time? Is this a bigger burden or is it just a of something that we would track anyways and have at at hand?
I'll defer to Anne, who's actually going to do the math to function all of this. There will be a little bit of extra work, but it's not um, insignificant, or it's not significant enough to be of concern, given the benefit ultimately of this.
You're good?
Yeah, no, I'm good. I noticed that Anne was nodding as well as.
Yeah, I don't want to understate it since Anne's actually going to be doing all that work. So uh, we will defer to her if she wants to speak.
Yeah, I can. Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Anne. Go ahead.
Through um, through the mayor to council, no, you're correct. It's not a lot of work, and it just provides clarity in that growth calculation. So um, administration is in agreement with the amendment.
Yeah, great. That's wonderful, dear.
All right. Uh, Counselor Jolly, you're good? No questions? Okay, I see no other questions, all except your motion, Counselor Hughes.
Okay, um, I what I've come to realize is, and the reason why I put forward the alternate motion was actually through discussion administration. So what I thought would be simple for calculations turned out to be more complicated. And so they suggested that this would be something that to be they're doing anyway in other programs that would just now just convert it over to any that are currently not being applicable. Specifically, I'm thinking of the outset agencies grant, but other areas of the city, they were already doing these calculations, projections and planning. So now we'll just apply it right across the board. Um, and we're just kind of just catching up in a little bit of a loop that somehow got missed. And I just personally think that the the city's growing on an annual basis fairly consistently. Um, it doesn't really vary that much, and those agencies have to pick up the the debt increase demand from the public. And yet we're not giving them at this point until unless this passes, the ability to actually have additional resource funding to be able to meet that need. So just waiting two or three years for the census and and then doing a large jump, they have to meanwhile work with less until the until it's actually adjusted. And so this would just allow us to acknowledge the fact that our population doesn't grow every three years, but rather annually. And that the the needs for these organizations is also going to be growing at that same rate. And then what we're going to be able to do is um, you know, every two to three years when we actually get the census, it'll just revise up. So I, from what I understand, it would probably be similar to like a 1.1% population increase. And if it actually is a 1.2, then that year would just be a slightly higher increase, but it would certainly do something to offset the demands that they have. Um, and allow the stages to uh, do what we can to update that. And and one of the things I had was just when we went this budget and we recognized that there was such a such a strong need for our agencies, and they definitely want the help. And then there's just this a lot of pressure for us to start changing things on the fly. And with the policies of both Counselor Jolly brought forward earlier this year, and then hopefully with this one, we are recognizing that and addressing that in some sort of fashion so that uh, we don't start making a ton of one offs if it's not necessary. That's it. Thank you.
Anyone else on debate? See none? Oh, Counselor Killick?
Uh, yeah, after being very closely involved in the uh, grant programs for community um, capital and and uh, community events grants, uh, and our agency grants, uh, the 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 message was loud and clear that every dollar counts. And as Counselor Hughes mentioned, this may only be a, you know, a one or one and a half percent population growth, but that translates to real dollars that help real needs. So um, very glad that she brought this forward and uh, all of the agencies will be thankful for every extra dollar they have because it means one other resident uh, is able to be helped in in St. Albert. So it's it's very important and uh, a good way to address it. Thank you. Uh, for for, thank you, uh, Counselor Hughes for bringing this forward.
Great. And now I'll call for the vote. Or do you have anything to close now?
I just wanted to thank administration for the census because that was actually what spurred us on to think about this. So inadvertent, but I think it'll be good news for them. That's it.
Who are we looking for? Counselor Bromansky? Sorry, vote is closed and that's unanimous. And speaking of Counselor Bromansky, we're on to your motion about Fountain Park Pool. So I'll get you to read it.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, that administration provide alternate and or additional options for the Fountain Park Pool Children's Play Area that will accommodate a larger age range.
All right, before I uh, accept that motion, I'm going to open it up to any questions that council might have of administration and or Counselor Hughes. Go ahead. Sorry, Counselor Bromansky, you can ask a question to anyone you want.
Okay, so um, with what we have, I understand we have this this um, split spray park is what's being planned. Do we have any other amenities already being planned to address older age groups?
So Counselor, the the existing amenities for older age groups will still exist. So the diving boards will remain in place, the uh, the smaller blue slide will remain in place, and the climbing wall will remain in place.
But forgive me, where's the climbing wall? Is that the we had one that came out. So is that is it is it a new climbing wall or fill me in? I thought we took that one.
I think I'll I'll ask Diane Anger to speak about the the ergonomics of it, but it is still there.
There she is.
Hello, good afternoon. To the mayor to Counselor Hughes. So it was the existing climbing wall that we removed prior to the RMR work, and we will we'll be replacing it back into the pool.
Okay, because I, and forgive me if I'm wrong, but I thought there was problems with rusting or something of that nature, but it was that was that in my head?
We have addressed that.
Okay, so going forward, we won't have that problem? Okay, so the main things we have right now is just it's the the diving boards, the small slide and.
The climbing wall.
Okay, with the current um, spray structure, is there room in the facility to handle another amenity that would be open for older age groups?
We could definitely explore other options. Um, the area where the current play, the play splash park um, will probably pretty much take up that whole space where the the stairs were into the slide. Um, we could look at other amenities um, throughout other parts of the pool potentially. Once we we were thinking, once the pool opens and uh, we have public um, accessing the pool and its amenities, we get some feedback if there was something, a gap or something missing, and then we could look at um, maybe potential additional options at that time.
Okay. I had another question that left me, so I'll let I'll let the next person go. And if it comes back in a great flash, I'll let you know.
All right, Counselor Jolly, I see you've got your hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you. So to administration, just to confirm your understanding of this motion, this wouldn't do anything to change kind of getting rid of the water slide and installing this this new play feature. Is that correct? Like that, that's still 100% going ahead. This motion wouldn't change that?
That that is certainly understanding. This would be stuff that was additive um, um, or complimentary too.
Okay, thank you. And I guess.
Hold on, Counselor Jolly. I want to make sure that's Counselor Bromansky's intention.
Um, well, I understand that that's the questioning today, so that's an either or is what how the motion was provided. So, yeah.
So your understanding, your intent was to not put in what's currently ordered?
That would have been my intent before it was provided by administration that the product is ordered for that. So now we have no choice.
Okay.
You know, in questioning that it would be alternative.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, and I guess just follow up question, um, probably to you, Mr. Fletcher, in terms of um, capacity, I know we have a lot on our plate in terms of rec planning. So with the Community Amenities Site and and so forth, if this passes, like what kind of impact would that have on on our capacity to work on, you know, Millennium Park and and all of those things?
Yeah, I certainly would have an impact. I think uh, currently now with the uh, the public engagement ongoing in the amenities site and the uh, the priority of Millennium Park, it would have to be sequenced. Um, and so in terms of the overall capacity, um, we'd have to get an understanding of where this all stacked out. It could be done. Uh, it's just how much time it would take to do all of it. Diane, do you want to comment on that more with more granularity?
Um, thank you for that um, response. Uh, I would just echo what um, Bill has said is that we will have to resequence work. Um, it will take some capacity with all the other uh, work that is on our plate, but we could absolutely uh, look at that more so towards the 25 budget though. So giving ourselves about a year after the facility.
More so towards the twenty five budget though, so giving ourselves about a year after the facility opens to really reassess, uh, the needs.
Okay, so I guess just follow up question to that. So if this passes, really, it would just sit on the table until twenty, twenty five? Is that right?
Uh, so through the chair to councillor Jolly, uh, we would, um, recommend that we, uh, be able to open the pool. Have public, um, access, um, gather feedback from the public before we bring anything forward to council. So timing would be through the twenty five budget.
Okay, thank you. Nothing further.
Yeah, and just to be clear, when I was reading the backgrounder, so I'm on page forty five of fifty two. Of our package and it says, it's, it's like the second to the last paragraph, right before the bullets. Through our motion of council, administration can investigate future options through this motion of council, right?
Th- th- this would absolutely be that, that we would do that. We would have to come back to you, obviously. Uh, because an additional anything would cost money and time and that would have to come back to.
Yeah, okay, so I just, because when I read that, I thought, well, do we need a separate motion? But you're considering this motion as direction to go and do more work and build a capital project in twenty five, essentially.
For, for its purposes, yes.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Killick?
Uh, thank you. Uh, do, does the current layout of the way we've got things designed at Fountain Park Pool is like their. Is it realistic that there's any, even any space available to add, even in the future? Um, uh, additional. Structure or something that would appeal to a, um, uh, a broader group. And not only physical space, but, um, I, I imagine we've just redone all the mechanicals in there. And it would, the backgrounder seemed to point that it would be incredibly expensive to, you know, dig up the floor again. And add, add something else, plumbing, draining, whatever. It, so, two, two questions of, have we actually got the space in the building that could accommodate anything? Um, for that other age group and number two, like, or would it require digging up everything that we've just? The, the paint is e- even dry on it.
Um, perhaps I could start with the second one. I, I guess that, that would depend on the nature of, um, of the installation. Anything that involved that would be significant in terms of time and money. There, there's no doubt about it. Um, you know, but I, I can't tell you because we haven't done the exhaustive research, if there were options that would be less intrusive and thus less expensive. The other consideration is, is do you have to close the pool for installation, which obviously no one, no one particularly wants to do. Uh, in terms of the, the, the scale and scope and the space, I'll, I'll ask Diane perhaps to comment on that.
Thank you. So I would, um, echo that really we have to do the feasibility to determine it, but the space is quite tight. Um, but it would depend on the research that we do, the amenity that we would potentially look at. Uh, maybe it could even be a beyond an actual physical structure. Maybe it's more about some programming, uh, that we could incorporate for an older age group. So we would really need to do the feasibility and assessment before we could come back with any options.
Thank you. Um, the, the other question I would have is, the slide, um, water slides. Were, were they classified as a service level? Because service levels can only be changed by council, I think. And so, w- would it have included that as a s- level of service that we were providing to residents? Or was this just something separate?
I think that the service levels, uh, speak specifically to the amenities and, and perhaps impact on the programming. They do not speak specifically to the slides itself. Uh, Diane, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, correct, Bill. Um, so it talks about play features as part of our service level, so broader than specific.
Okay, so it, so it's a broad level description of, of a service level. Not, not a, a specific slide going in or out or whatever. That's the purview of administration to come up with the best solution to the needs and budget within that, that. Building or renovation or, you know, whatever the future might change in a park, equipment or something like that.
That, that is correct, councillor, yep.
Uh, so last question, I often hear the term that we replace like with like. Um, that's been the case when we look at upgrading our kiddie play parks, uh, et cetera. So I know it's not exactly the same, but that, that term is used. Wh- what does that actually mean? Then we could take out a slide and put in a, uh, a water feature, uh.
Okay, yeah, I think, you know, in this instance, it was a holistic look at the amenities that were available across St. Albert installation. So with two slides at Service Place, uh, and really, um, you know, a very small accessible playground area at Service Place. And we looked at the relative age groups, uh, that factored with resources, to be, to be honest, um, was, was certainly a consideration, really drove this. So, um, you know, like with like means that amenity was replaced with an amenity in this case, not that it was sort of an identical amenity, if that makes sense. Diane, do you want to comment?
I'll just add to that, that it's the play value that it provides. So a slide, a spray park, those kinds of things, um, are the play value that we look at as opposed to a like for a like, a slide for a slide. Uh, so it looks at the demographic that it's serving, the kind of play experience that, that, um, is being provided. And, um, those are the factors that we take into consideration when we look for a replacement for an existing aquatic amenity.
Okay, and we, we would view that the slides at Service Place would still provide a service to that differentiated age group then.
Yes, correct. We, we look at, um, our full complement of recreation amenities that we provide across the city. And try to provide complimentary and differing, um, amenities. So people have different experiences that are different, uh, aquatic, um, play areas, whether it's Grosvenor Pool. Or whether it's our water spray park or our, our two indoor facilities at Fountain Park and Service. We try to make sure there's a nice mix of amenities, so people have a, a differing experience at each of the aquatic facilities.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Broadhead?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, just to confirm, I, I actually like the spirit behind this particular motion. I see Fountain Park as a, uh, all ages, uh, facility. And, and the idea of going to a water facility and, and enjoying is not age limited. Uh, but the, the, the question that I have is as you go forward and you do this. Uh, particular investigation around enhancing the experience there. I just want to confirm that this is not going to delay the opening. It's going to be closed for virtually a year now. And I think our people are waiting for it to be open. This is additive, you said earlier, just want to confirm that.
So, so that is certainly understanding is it will take time to do the assessment. Um, it would be additive to what is currently planned, so that we would not come forward with a solution that would adversely impact the, the opening date this summer.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Mackay?
Uh, part of my question was answered in, uh, councillor Broadhead's initial one was in rela- relation to. Timing and then the, um, additive portion still confuses me because, I mean, I think the, in, the. Um, reading the background or administration was potentially going to be doing this anyways. Uh, in relation to opening up the facility, uh, watching, um, use of the different features. And then, um, coming back with either, uh, recommendation to add additional features or do something. I mean, that's part of a normal, uh, progression of, uh, of a facility. Is that not correct?
That is correct. I think there's a, I don't think, I know there is a constant evaluation and monitoring, um, that ultimately. Uh, informs future decision making or future recommendations for council decision making. Um, I, Diane could speak a little bit more to the specifics as it relates to, uh, to our aquatic facilities.
Uh, thank you. And through the, the chair to councillor, um, we would definitely do an assessment as we open up our new facility. We'll, um, get feedback from our public, uh, we'll see how, um, all of our amenities are aligning and working. Um, we wouldn't normally bring back probably an update to council unless we just, we're looking at some sort of a change. If council wants to, to direct administration to absolutely do the feasibility and assessment and bring back some potential options. We would request that a motion is probably the best way to move forward with that. Um, and poten- potentially the mo- current motion we have, we could potentially take out the alternative and just leave, um, additional options. Uh, as the motion to bring back, if council would like administration to do the feasibility and then bring back some options for the twenty twenty five budget.
Yeah, and I, I, uh, that's was going to be where I was actually asking my question towards. Because, I mean, certainly, um, my read of this wasn't, um, that we were just going to review it. And then potentially come back if we thought we had to add it, but this is much more just, this is requiring you to look at an alternate. And then or additional ones that actually would allow, and the children's play area to accommodate a larger age range. When the actual facility itself provides that larger, like, opportunity for recreation for a larger age range. But this one is specific to the children's play area. So, I mean, I just want to make sure we're clear on that because it's not, I mean, it's not, it's looking at. Totally changing that. And so I, when you initially, to the initial question earlier, I think councillor, councillor Jolly's question, it kind of confused me. Because I thought this is just something you guys were going to be doing anyways. But in fact, this is actually looking at a specific area within that facility, correct? Is that your understanding, Mr. Fletcher?
Yes, councillor.
Thank you for the clarification.
The agenda package. Under alignment to council direction or mandatory statutory provisions. It says on January twenty two thousand and twenty three, council or SCOW passed the following motion. We didn't pass this motion. Do you know what I'm saying, Captain Mister Lefleur? Does, does it, does everybody's read that way? You don't know our agendas are lined up with administration's understanding and then.
Madam Mayor.
And then.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
I apologize. I noticed that myself. I had expected it was going to be deleted and, uh, it didn't get. So much, it's my fault, but it's still there. I should have second proof read it.
Okay, I think we, if this isn't in the public ground, we need to somehow correct that. So people don't think the motion was passed on January twentieth or that it was passed at all until we actually pass it, so.
We'll, we'll, we'll correct the, uh, the AR so that it does not have a false statement as it does.
Thank you. Well, councillor Killick, another question? Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I guess the question for administration, would it make it clear if there is a friendly amendment to the motion as it's worded? That it, that it would say administration provide, uh, additional options for, rather than alternative. Get rid of the alternative, because the alternative speaks to what councillor Mackay just brought up, alternative to what's already there. And we know we can't, to my questions, rebuild and dig up and.
So councillor Bermansky, would you be okay if the motion read that administration provide additional options for the Fountain Park Pool? So just deleting alternate and or.
I'd like to put it through as is currently because, uh, working with legal, they did allow the alternate there. So I wanted to get fine details on at what stage they're at and what exactly is going on in that position. Because it was provided to council that would, we would be updated and we have an email that, you know, discussing that the details were being worked on. And here we're saying it's too late now. So I just want clarification on that. I'm happy to take the, you know, the adjustment. If, if nothing else can be done, but I need full clarification on that.
Okay, well, I think it, it says right in here, I thought the, the understanding was that the structure is ordered and it's going in, right?
That, that is correct.
Are you asking for them to stop that?
Even though it's ordered. I, I, we don't have information at what stage anything is at, other than this letter, uh, given to council. That details are currently be work, being worked on. So I find there's a lot of information missing that if I just opt that out of the, out of my motion, I'll never hear the answer to it, so.
Well, I, I believe the answer's in the backgrounder that it's been ordered. So this is your perfect opportunity to get what you need today. So ask away.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, in the, in the information that was provided, it says through two thousand and nineteen facility assessment. Water slide was determined at end of life and not feasible to repair. Plans were, um, you know, projected to repair, re- remove and replace. Is the understanding. So it was mentioning, you know, in council through communications with administration on several occasions. That, um, you know, we would be updated as to what was going on with that replacement. So we did receive the letter in, um, in December, uh, saying that this submitted, of course, you know, nobody wants the pool closed any longer than it is. And, um, to keep the ball rolling, that administration thought this play area would be a good idea. It said there, details are currently be worked, uh, being worked on to complete this amenity within ti- timeline. So my follow up was where's the details? Like we didn't really get details on whether that was going through. And at that point, we were told that this is ordered already. So my concern is that we're, um, rushing things. Putting the replacement for something that's not even the same thing that was there to keep.
When it order, Mayor Heron, this is, this is referring, this isn't referring to the motion. This is referring to a project that's already approved and, and complete or in progress.
Approved it and it's not in progress, so, yeah.
Well, sort of in progress because of, I'm going to allow the, ju- like, just get to a specific question.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you said the, I'll ask then, uh, this amenity was ordered, uh, by administration direction. Uh, to stay within budget and, um, but it is a replacement. Wh- at what stage are you at with that? Has there been any plumbing done for it? Anything other than ordering the actual play area that sits there? That's the question.
Diane, do you want?
Yeah, I'll, I'll push that over to Diane, um, to, or if I need to, you can go to engineering.
Yeah, thank you for the question. And actually, I will defer to Tim Saunders, who is, um, managing, his team is managing this project. And he can give you a full detail on where we are at in the project, um, development right now.
Thank you, Diane. Yes, it, that is correct. The, the feature has been ordered. The mechanical has been ongoing. The plumbing is complete for the installation. And the flooring work surrounding that has been taken in that into consideration. So any of the mechanical with the flooring installation slab replacement has incorporated the work required for the play feature.
Okay, and what date was that work started?
I would have to get back to you with an exact date, councillor Bermansky.
Do you have an idea like a month or two months or six months or?
No, this was, this would be late in the year after administration had given the go ahead for it. There was the flooring, the slab work that was required because of the other issues that, uh, happened with the slab. And then when that work was, it was in a holding pattern until we got the direction for this play feature. Because there's mechanical work that has to be incorporated into that slab replacement.
Okay, so.
December, January, I'll, I'll give you the exact timeframe. I'll have to get back to you with that.
Uh, but it was, so the, that's in terms of the physical pieces, Tim, if you could source that, that would be great. But, uh, it would, the end of last year when the go ahead was given.
Okay, so we received the letter December nineteenth and then you were working like the day after kind of thing, is, is that what you're saying?
Very close to it, yes.
Close to, if not concurrent, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, um, well, I guess since council, um. Um, I'm of the impression that, um, we weren't really updated that it was going forward. But again, we don't want to delay anything. The, um, you know, the pool needs to go forward. The public has been very, very patient in this whole process. And the only thing that's, um, my concern is that we, we aren't meeting the needs at that pool. So I will take the friendly amendment from councillor Killick for the alternatives or additional rather than alternative. And that's, my hand was forced, so I have no choice in that. So I will take that.
So do, do you forget that we're scratching out, uh, councillor Killick's friendly amendment is to remove the words alternate and or. Go, go ahead, yeah.
Um, I just need clarification, Mr. Fletcher or Diane, as to what you consider the children's play area. Do you, you, do you mean just that new area that we're looking at? Or do you mean actually the surface deck, like where the wall is, where the, uh, other slide is? Is that all, would that all constitute a play area? Or are you just referring specifically to the new feature?
Diane?
Thank you for the question. Um, in, in writing the backgrounder, Danielle's expectation was is that she would be looking at additional options. For the entire aquatic area. Um, but again, I'll defer to councillor Bermansky. Would that meet your expectations as opposed to just the play area, the small play area that's being installed with the sprays?
So just to follow up, Madam Mayor.
Hold on, did count, did you have a question for councillor Bermansky that you needed answered? Sounded like there was one in there.
Um, I'm. I'm just clarifying. I'm just clarifying, Mayor, just clarifying that if we looked at additional options, that we would look at the, the entire pool area. For other options or alternatives, like that we could put additional play features. As opposed to just the spray area that's over close to the hot tub. So just wanted to know whether or not was the full aquatic area or did you want us to just look at a small portion of the aquatics area?
Can we, can we get clarification? I mean, I know you've already taken one friendly, but can you say the whole entire aquatic area rather than just?
So let's just, let's let Counselor answer the question and then I'll come to you. Okay, just give her two seconds.
Asking whether or not.
Yeah, we'll get there. Yep.
Okay, thank you Diane for the question. In, in a perfect world, it would have been the water slide. In that particular area where it existed initially. So we're at a situation now that we're, you know, no, I don't think anyone in St. Albert wants the pool shut down again. Like, you know, in, in, anytime in the near future to tear up anything. So I guess. It would be that, that small area. Yeah, we'll save that.
Okay, so she's clarified. She just wants it in the children's play area. Now I can look to you.
Well, I.
You want to make an amendment to say all of the.
I, I, I think that we limit our options if we just contain it to a smaller area. So I would say the aquatics area. So I mean, if, if Counselor Bromansky is not going to take an additional friendly and I, I, I understand if she doesn't. But I, I'll put forward a amending motion that it includes all of the aquatics area.
So I have a feeling that's not going to be friendly.
We want it to be as friendly as possible and get the best amenities for the city. That's the goal at the end here. So.
But I need to know if you're going to accept.
Okay, as, as long as, well, I guess the information would provide if it was going to be shut down anyhow. So yeah, we'll, we'll stick with the full amenities then. Yeah.
Okay, so now the motion reads that administration provide additional options for Fountain Park Pool.
Aquatic.
Aquatic area that will accommodate a larger age range.
So.
Uh, Council, Mr. Fletcher?
No, I, I, I think that's clear, right? So, so that provides a fair amount of leeway to do the, I guess. If, if there's an expectation that, that a specific item is what is envisioned, it would be helpful if we were told just to look at it in a specific item. For that, I, I guess the concern seems to be a slide, right? In, in this instance, maybe I'm wrong. But if that's the case, then, you know, a motion to look at that would certainly clarify the issue.
That's not my intent is not to, I don't want to limit administration just to look at a slide. I'm just saying, what are the additional options based on the space that you now have available? Based on the, kind of the new reconstruction that is on take on, on way.
A- and I meant not in terms of that, the amendment, but I think the, the initial issue was concern over the, the, the type of amenity going in, replacing the slide. So.
Well, I mean, I, I guess that goes back to the mover. I mean, if the mover wants to specifically identify a slide, then I would suggest that. She not take the friendly and identify what she particularly wants. So.
She's already taken it though. Yeah.
I apologize. Thank you.
Counsel Hughes.
Okay, um, since we're, this is a group project today. The other thing I'm wondering is whether or not you'd want to put a deadline in here, Counselor Bromansky, where you could say like for the twenty twenty four budget process. And that way, it, because what you don't have right now is a deadline of when we expect to have this motion completed. So we could say for twenty twenty four or by the, I guess there's two things you could say for the twenty twenty four or budget. Which is then they're going to put a business case forward on that. Or you could say like by June thirtieth, the twenty twenty four and then. They could bring it forward at that time. So I'm not sure what you prefer. If it were me, I'd just do the for next year's budget because we do have like nine months for them to explore that. And then it would go into place for the following year if we were to approve something. So that's my suggestion.
Okay, so we'll accept that as part of.
Okay. So just to say for the, you poor people down there, to be provided in the twenty twenty four budget. Or as a business case in twenty twenty four budgets or project charter, my project charter, we'll get it right. As a, okay. Ignore everything I just said, as a project charter in the twenty twenty four budget.
And Diane had her hand.
Okay, yeah, I see. Okay, go ahead Diane and then Bill and then I'll get to you, Counsel Jolly.
Um, thanks, thank you, Mayor. So just to that motion, the twenty four budget could be very tight to try and get anything back in. For a project charter. We were anticipating that we would open the pool. We'd have public feedback. We'd be able to see how everything's working and then we could bring something back for the twenty five budget process.
And there's no way you could get that done earlier. I mean, this is a business case, like this is still, it could. It could still be exploratory even at that point. It would be just a commitment to move forward on something.
Yeah, I, I would say, yes, we can get there, but we would forego. Some of the preparatory work in terms of the public engagement, we wouldn't have the, the level of fidelity we'd have for a year of usage. And if that's acceptable to council, then we would forego that and, and look at those options in, in isolation of that.
It's your call, Council Bromansky. Personally, I'm, I don't see why we can't have a project charter done in, within nine months from now. And what, um, that provides that at that point, you can do the public feedback. At that point, you can come back with the options. Doesn't have to be installed in March. Right? So, um, that's where I would go with that. Two years seems like a long time.
I think that the, if I'm allowed to speak, twenty twenty four is, is a good date. Because at least we have some substance to the public of, of what we're doing, you know, if they're. Uh, if they're wanting more age range facilities within the pool, once they see this splashable when the pool opens. So I appreciate that. Twenty twenty four.
So how does it read now?
I think I have it here.
Okay, perfect. Are we, are we out of questions? Counsel Jolly, you had your hand up, did you not?
Yeah, just really briefly, Ms. McMore, to your Victor, could you remind me how many kind of millions of unfunded capital growth projects? We have in the books right now? In the ten year plan, does anyone know ballpark unfunded?
Um, I don't have that information offhand. I'll see if anyone in finance, Anne, do you have that?
If you give me a moment, I'll, I'll locate that information.
Sorry, Anne, I should have messaged you that one.
We've seen that sheet. We need to like do, 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 do.
We've all seen it so many times. We should have it burned into our helmets, but.
Or had. It's more than that. I don't do the work.
See if I can. If you guys want to move forward, I can even put it in the chat once we find it. If you guys want to move forward in the meeting too.
Uh, the chat doesn't work because not everyone has access to the chat and, and there's actually no more questions. So I'll see if I can find it. So just in our budget package that we got last fall. In two thousand and twenty four, the unfunded municipal capital growth that I'm seeing for just two thousand and twenty four. Is ten million, twenty five is another eleven million, twenty six is eighteen million. And of course, it just goes on. I don't have, I don't have a total.
Yeah, no, that's super thing. That's helpful. Thank you.
It's not accurate as you would have been, Anne, but it's a gives them, gives everyone an idea.
No, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, I see no more questions. So Counselor Bromansky, uh. I'm accepting your motion as amended three different times to go ahead and have your opening arguments.
Okay, opening arguments. Again, as mentioned prior, you know, we want to be providing the best amenities. You know, to, for every user of the facility in St. Albert. And I have had feedback from, you know, people that have contacted me that Service Place does have a children's play area. As mentioned in our backgrounder. So they see that Fountain Park didn't need the children's play area. But they were a little bit disappointed in some of the things that will not be there that were there prior. So I would like to see the pool opened on time, but have the public understand that we have their back in looking for alternative. Or additional options to what has been decided to get the pool opened on time. And that we are, are looking to improve facilities for every age group in the community. That's it.
All right, Counsel Hughes.
I think Counsel Jolly had her hand up. I, I don't mind waiting.
No, go ahead.
Okay. Um, well, I'm going to support this motion. I think this is a group project, if there ever was one to this afternoon. But I, I, the major concern is what we have right now available, both it's this, this mini slide, the diving board. Really does not meet all of the needs that we have for, I'm looking at teenagers, older children and adults. And the pool is such a popular amenity. And I think that we just really need to say accommodate those, those groups in a larger fashion than we did. When we had the slide, it was a very popular, people love slides, doesn't matter how old you are. And it did something to address that. And without coming out, I think we need to recognize that it can't just be filled with something for younger age groups only. And that a huge number of our users are teenagers and adults. A huge number of them go to the pool, like those teens go to the pool all the time. Is a thing to do. And I want to have it where they come there and have a draw and not just try to drown each other. But rather have something else they can do to enjoy themselves. Because that's the problem is when you don't have things to use yourself, sometimes you get into situations you shouldn't. So I think that this is, this is a good motion in that it will allow us to have a timeline of when we'll be discussing it. And give the public an idea of if we're going to do something or not, we may or may not approve it, anything in the twenty twenty four budget. We'll see what comes forward and what the price estimates are. But it does let them know that there's a timeline of, in a reasonable fashion of whether or not we'll be accommodating them in any other way, shape or form. Than what we had in there for, that we've always had in there. Really, I don't know, it's been like decades. So I think that, and considering I realize that we have many things on the unfunded list. But A, this does not guarantee that it's going to be funded, even if it comes into budget. And B, this is a very, very high demand, popular amenity. And I think that we should be showcasing it the best way possible. And make sure that every user group is being addressed to our best possible, uh, best capability. So that's it. Thank you.
Counsel Killik. And I'll get to you, Counsel Jolly.
I'd just like to recognize that council working as a team and listening to where we started. Uh, with good input from administration and detail. I, the, the motion on the floor is the tough part. And accepting those friendly motions to make it better. And I think I heard Counselor Bromansky say to get the best pool for our residents. Is exactly what I think this will achieve. So kudos for bringing it forward. And, and building upon it to get a better motion, which will end up with a better result for, for our residents. And that, that's exactly what we want. So I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
Counsel McKay?
I just, I think I.
Oh, sorry, Counsel Jolly.
Yeah.
And then Counsel McKay. Yeah.
Thanks, Mayor. You know, as, as the person in this room, I think that spent more time at Fountain Park than, and than anyone else. I, I definitely have thoughts about this. I've known the pool since before it had a water slide and I'm so excited that this new amenity is in line with our universal accessibility plan. Uh, in a way that the water slide was not. So kudos to staff for one for that. I, I won't be supporting this motion. For a few different reasons. You know, the, the first is that administration said that they just can't do this well. For the twenty twenty four budget. And, and I don't want to do something if we can't do it really well in a, in a comprehensive way. Another reason is, is we know that staff are doing this kind of evaluation continuously. So I don't want council motions to be directing something that admin is already doing in a really thoughtful way. Kind of, I suspect everyone knows that ten year capital growth budget. I, I know that this is just not going to hit the top of the priority list. When we want to build out that community amenities site, we had a row hit today. That really is going to be a priority when we have, you know, tens of millions of dollars that is unfunded in our growth capital. Uh, we really need to focus on those priority areas and updating Fountain Park when we just put a huge update in into it. I, I just know from sitting in those priority setting meetings that, that this just won't hit that list. And that goes to kind of my last point, that I want us to have the capacity to do a great job on the things that we can do. So Millennium Park, um, community amenities site, and, and I want to protect staff's time from that. So, so we can be focused in our activities. So that's why I'm not supporting this motion. Thank you.
Okay, Counsel McKay?
Uh, yeah, I'm just going to be really quick because most of the. Comments have been covered that I would have had anyways, but I just want to actually give kudos to staff. Uh, in relation to identifying a, a feature that is accessible. And something that maybe we had in only a small amount in Service Place and Landrick's. Waterpark, but actually this will, by adding this feature and by going out in. And looking at the, what we can do and we've now added a playscape that will be accessible. Uh, maybe for not everybody, but it's going to impact a younger demographic. And I think it just goes to some of the points that had already been made, that staff is always constantly scanning and constantly looking. At other features that we, or additions to our entire recreation amenities that we provide to our residents. So I, um, my main point in actually making a comment on this motion was just to say thank you to staff. And kudos for always looking after the residents of our community.
I'll just say that, you know, it's interesting how long we took on this topic. Yeah, exciting water. And I, I, I do agree with the, with the group thinking and we came up with the. Uh, motion that represented effort a lot of people. Uh, but my thoughts on this are. Um, very similar to Counselor Jolly's is that our attention needs to be. At the community amenities, other recreation stuff that's going on in our community. I, I Fountain Park Pool is a great facility, but it does have, in my opinion, everything, a little bit of everything for everybody. The slide that will be there goes into the deep end, so it's not for the little kids, it's for the teenagers. Um, there's the climbing wall, there's the ropes you can swing on. It's, it's, it's fine as it is for, to ask staff to spend time. To put together, uh. I didn't ask question, but I'm going to assume it's probably twenty odd hours to put together a capital project. I'm, I'm seeing some nods with, with my thoughts right now. I would never, ever approve it. Because I want the money with, with such a unfunded growth capital growing list. I want the focus to be on new amenities in, in our community. So it's more about the time of staff to, with a, with a failed end in the, in the long run. So Counsel Bromansky, I'll let you close.
Thank you through the mayor. This feature in Fountain Park was kind of a last edition as well. So I mean, in the process of, of what every, everything that came forward in the redevelopment of this pool. And the repairs that needed to be done, it was, it was a good, you know, good addition. But I'm not sure it was a, a good replacement for what we're losing in the pool. And I appreciate, you know, that, that it's, it's an amenity that's good for young children. I appreciate that. But we've, we've given up something in exchange. So with this motion, what I can see coming forward is maybe a creative idea. I'm, you know, I'm not asking to tear up the whole pool or shut it down for periods of time or whatever. But if it takes twenty hours and we get something, you know, really innovative and creative that can be added. And, and make people feel that they weren't, something wasn't taken away from them in this, in this redevelopment. Then that's what I would hope to find. And I truly appreciate council trying to help me out with this. And I think that because we're working together, we all did understand that there's something missing, you know, in this, in this small play area. In comparison to what was there. So, uh, I know it's an ask of administration. But if it's twenty some hours and, and we get a good result for the public at the end and keep everybody happy, that's the goal at the end of the day. So I hope for support in this one. Thank you. So I hope for support in this one. Thank you.
Call for the vote. Voting's close and that passes by majority with Counselor Jolly and Counselor, or Mayor Heron opposed. We are now done with the regular agenda items. Um, I feel like there's a notice of motion or you had, yeah, go ahead. It was on Millennium Park, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you. And, and before I read this in, I really should apologize. Um, when we were selecting the candidates for the three open positions, I recognized Renee. Um, but Grace was there as well all day, uh, as backup. Um, and I, I forgot to mention your, your help. So, uh, please accept my apologies and recognition as well for, for being there through that long, uh, long day. Um, so, uh, my notice of motion is that one, uh, the, that the twenty twenty three budget be amended to remove the three hundred and thirty seven thousand funding for the project described as DARP dash zero zero five Millennium Park Design Phase Two and Construction. And that number two, that administration be directed to bring to council, a council workshop of visioning and site potential exercise for Millennium Park prior to a revised project charter being presented as part of the twenty twenty four budget deliberations based on the feedback received.
All right. Thank you for that. Looking forward to that conversation. Is there any other notices, emotions or, um, oh, go ahead, Counselor Bredet?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, uh, information request, uh. So I, I know I've sent this in, so I'll read it into the record. Number one, what information is provided on the city of St. Albert website to assist citizens in properly reporting? When they have had an experience with a dog they deem to be dangerous, i.e. they've been chased or bitten. Number two, what is the process and requirements for identifying a dog as a dangerous dog? Number three, what restrictions are imposed on the owners of a deemed dangerous dog to ensure that their dog is handled appropriately, to ensure the safety of other dogs and humans that come into contact with the dangerous dog? Number four, is there a register of dogs deemed to be dangerous in St. Albert? Is this register published and available for public review? Are the owners and addresses of dangerous dogs identified publicly? Are there municipalities in Alberta or elsewhere in Canada where such registries are established? If not, are there legal impediments to the creation of such a registry? Fine, uh, number five, are fines issued by St. Albert bylaw to owners of dogs who bite humans? One investigative evidence is required before a citation is issued. Number six, please define the criteria used by bylaw enforcement officers to determine quotes per vote under Animal Bylaw Section fifteen sub two. Number seven, is there a general quotes rule of thumb? The courts used to define the number of times a dangerous dog injures other dogs or humans before significant action is taken against the dog and its owner, one bite, two bites, a hundred bites, that sort of thing. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing nothing, I'm going to ask for a motion to go into camera for twelve point one. Counselor Killik, go ahead.
The council move in camera to discuss matter pursuant to section twenty one and section twenty four dash one dash A of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act.
Call for the vote on this one? Vote is closed and that passes unanimously.